I, Joseph Donovan. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the Planning Commission.
Planning Commission.
In the city of Breezy Point. County of Crow Wing. State of Minnesota. To the best of my judgment and abilities, so help me God.
I will call the meeting to order. And as you just witnessed, I and Tracy Donovan just took the oath of office for another term on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Next on our agenda is election of officers, and I would like to suggest that this is an opportunity to rotate the chair, which I think is a good idea. I think all of us need to take a turn. So hopefully you will be open to that proposition. How do we proceed, Jerry, with this?
Anybody from the, from the table can make a motion to nominate whoever.
I will entertain a motion for nomination of chairperson.
I nominate Joe again, because he does such a great job.
I guess my suggestion didn't go too far.
Well, you just seem, you handle it so well.
Well, thank you. Other nominations. Tracy.
I nominate Marcy Weaver.
There you go. Can I decline a nomination? Make this easier?
You can if you so choose.
With, I, you know, it's been an honor serving as chair, and I appreciate the nomination, but I, I think Marcy would be a great, great chairperson, so I would decline the nomination. Are there any other nominations? If not, all in favor of Marcy Weaver? Oh, I'm sorry. For some reason, I'm in a hurry for this to happen. Do I have a second to that nomination?
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a nomination and a second. All in favor of the nomination of Marcy to become chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Should I finish this, Marcy, and hand it over to you? I mean, finish the nomination process?
Is that the take place immediately, or is that the next meeting?
No, right away immediately.
Right away, I think. Where, would you do?
Why don't you finish off the nomination?
Okay, okay, I'll do, I'll do that quickly. I would entertain a nomination for vice chair.
Then I'll say Joe should be it.
And I would second that nomination.
Okay, we have a nomination and a second. Are there any other nominations? Tracy.
I would nominate my friend right next to me to be co-chair, or assistant chair, in the, in the tradition of rotating.
Vice chair? Would you accept that nomination, Lee?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I'll try again. Thank you very much, but I will decl- decline the nomination for, for vice chair. Okay, we have a nomination for Lee to become vice chair. Is, is there a second, or did we do that?
I'll second it.
You haven't done that yet.
We do have a second. All in favor of that nomination, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Marcy? I'll trade, I'll trade seats with you.
I'm gonna miss you over here, Marcy.
Yeah, you two have to guarantee that the meetings will not last more than one hour.
Oops, excuse me.
Grab my jacket.
All right, then we will continue with the approval of the December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one minutes. And would anyone like to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I will move the approval of the minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, motion approved and seconded. And then moving on to the council liaison report for the March seventh, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
Yes, okay. Got to make sure I had this turned on. Meeting last night, we talked about an issue from the, the Roads Committee with speed limits on the, the street, the streets throughout Breezy Point. There was a, a thought process where we could uniformly lower the speed limits to twenty miles an hour throughout the city. We're looking at that. The issue at, that we're trying to address has to do with Shoreview Drive. And the resident out there feels the speed limits are, are too high. And so we have ordered and we just received a data monitor, a speed limit monitor for, that we're going to put up on Shoreview. And we're going to collect data there this summer and then revisit it in the fall after we get this data in. The other thing that we talked about has to do with Board of Equalization. We are, typically what's happened in the past is if people thought their property values were too, were too high, they could come to the Board of Equalization, which was essentially the city council, and appeal that. And the county would be there to say yea or nay. And there is an alternate process, it's called the open book process, where everything is handled by the county and we wouldn't necessarily have to be bothered with it here in the city. I think we want to get away from the Board of Equalization. And so this will be our last Board of Equalization. And later on this year, we will vote to have, it's referred to as open book. And then what you do is you just go into the county and then state your case there. They have time allotted for that. We hired and we authorized the hiring of a new police officer, Nicholas Salvold, as a full-time police officer. And that was essentially about it. We had some discussion on our tort limits, our statutory liability limits. And we're going, we tabled that until next month where we can get a little bit more information, because evidently with different, with increasing property values as well as our increasing size, we want to take another look at that, talk to our insurance people and talk to the various, talk to, you know, some attorneys to make sure that we're doing the right thing on that. So we'll have an answer for that one next month, so. But otherwise, that was about it. I'm not sure if anybody has any questions. But it was a relatively short meeting. We were done in about a half an hour. Roger?
That went on, on March fifteenth, a special council meeting, is that on?
Oh, yes. Well, we talked about that beforehand. I didn't, yeah. You all know that Patrick Wilson has turned in his resignation, and we are in the search process. We have received ten applicants. And we have reviewed their resumes and their applications. We limited, we narrowed it down to four people that we want to bring in for face-to-face interviews. One of those already has dropped out. So there will be three people, we have a special meeting on the fifteenth, which is a week from tonight, to interview all, all those three remaining candidates. And hopefully we can have an answer as to who the new city administrator will be after that. So the candidates appear to be pretty well, pretty good. So we'll, you know, have more information on that next week. Any questions on that? I can't tell you who they are, but okay.
Just a comment, I believe those interviews next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
They're in the morning?
It's, there's a schedule. It's going to go pretty much, pretty much all day, yeah.
It's nine thirty till, I think, after, after lunch, and then I think there's some deliberations after lunch.
Right.
I think the other thing that you may have missed is that you approved a joint powers agreement with
Oh!
Pequot Lakes to jointly own a fire department.
Right. That was, that was, and that was, I mean, we've been talking about this for a long time, so we have been looking into, going into a joint powers, basically being joint owners of the fire department with Pequot Lakes. This has been going on for a long time, and finally, Pequot is agreeing. So we actually have a, a joint powers agreement that we approved pending final review from the attorneys. So if there's any more Ts that need crossed and Is that need to be dotted on the agreement. And once that is put into place, then there will be a fire board that is essentially operated by both Pequot and Breezy Point. And they will essentially own the fire department, so.
Madam Chair. Tom, what are the advantages?
The biggest advantage there is we have more control over the fire department. Going way back, probably a good year ago, we started looking at the, the fire contract. They were going to be increasing the, the amount that we paid because they were going to have to buy some equipment, okay? And we discovered at that point, the piece of equipment that they wanted to buy was going to be like around two hundred thousand dollars. They had thirty thousand dollars in their capital improvement budget, okay? And we thought that was not good, okay? And so we basically said that something needed to be done because they weren't appropriating, you know, the amount of money that was going to be needed. And this way, we will have, it'll, it's going to cost us a little bit more from the standpoint of we're going to be putting money into the capital budget as well as Pequot is going to be putting money into the capital budget. The problem was Pequot wasn't putting money into the capital budget, but now they will be contributing to that. So that helps us out because it ensures that we have better fire coverage for our area.
Because you share equipment and personnel, I would guess, okay.
So all, like all the, the fire department, they work, they previously would be working directly for Pequot Lakes, okay? Now they'll be working for the fire board, okay? And that fire board is shared between Breezy Point and, and Pequot.
Interesting.
Yeah. So it's, it's really, you know, this has been going on for, like I say, the negotiations have been going on for almost a year now. And it's coming into fruition. And I think it's, it's a really positive thing for us, yep.
Marcy?
How does the fire board get elected, or are they?
It's, it consists of the mayor of both cities, and then a council member from each council, and then a citizen from each. And they would be, you know, obviously the, the council member and, and mayors, but those would be elected. And they automatically have a seat on the fire board. And then you have one citizen from each city that, that's appointed.
And we just put that information on the website today, people, to apply for that board position. So it'd be like Planning Commission or Parks Committee. We're looking for one.
I don't know if it's still this way, but it used to be that on the fire board was also a representative from each, in, in the case I'm familiar with Pelican Township, had a member on the, on the fire board because Pelican Township contracted with Pequot for fire protection. And they also contracted with Mission and Nisswa. But my, my question is, how would this impact those other parties that are, that, that had contracted with Pequot?
To the best of my knowledge, I don't believe that changes, and in other words, they each have a representative because they are a contract holder. So in other words, if they have a contract for fire services from previously Pequot, now it'll be from the Pequot-Breezy Point.
Okay.
And the Pequot-Breezy Point administration will be by that fire board. Any other questions?
All right. Then the next item on our agenda is for open forum. This is for anyone that's not currently on the agenda that would like to come forth and speak. Is there anyone that would like to come forward to the open forum, number one? All right, then we can begin with the next item, which is Rachel Hodge of the Ashdown Forest School. We have an item up here for review. Rachel, would you like to come forward and speak? And as you do so, please state your name and address for the record.
He's my support.
Go ahead and state your name for the record as well, please.
My name is Rachel Hodge, and this is my partner Jacob Longley. We reside at six seven one six Hill Road. We moved here in two thousand eighteen to start a nature-based preschool program for children ages two through six, held primarily outdoors. This is a growing movement across the nation in an effort to raise happier and healthier children. I did bring some information about our philosophy and mission in case you have a chance to review that as well. We are licensed through Crow Wing County and the Department of Human Services as a Class C-three group family childcare. Our program needs to receive all listening requirements and we operate in compliance with the state. And then a little bit about our background starting the school. We first became licensed in June of two thousand nineteen. We have had consistent growth and success. We're now capable of forty-five students in their families since then. Some are traveling from Spars Walker in Minneapolis and even Marshall, Minnesota. I personally began the school as a sole proprietor, and within six months, Jake was able to leave his job and begins teaching full-time, and we now operate as a partnership. In some ways, the COVID-nineteen pandemic has contributed to our growth, as many young families are now seeking an outdoor learning environment. We now have a full-time teacher as well, Ryan Moore Guard. In June of two thousand twenty-one, we were able to build a twenty-seven-foot wide yurt, five hundred seventy-two square feet, about two hundred feet behind our house, to be used as a storage space and licensed shelter or accessory structure. A quarter number house also remains licensed as an emergency relocation area for back lawn use. The current year's structure and seed source have been inspected and approved by DHS, our county licenser Michelle House, the city of Breezy Point, fire marshal Dan Beeson, our licensed contractor, and our stove installer Alan Tier. In January, Leadeck, the Brainerd Lakes Area Economic Development Corporation, partnered with Crow Wing County to provide over five hundred thousand dollars in grant funding to solve the childcare shortage in our county. Our school has been chosen as a one hundred thousand dollar recipient of this funding. A large portion of the grant funding is dedicated towards pouring an additional concrete slab and building an additional yurt structure so that we can create twelve to fourteen additional childcare openings each day and hire additional staff along with the potential after addition as stated in our interim use application that we have available today. We are here today in hopes of working with the city to find a solution that will allow this project. We were initially informed by DHS that we would need to operate on a commercial property by rezoning, or operate with two separate addresses on our property. We mentioned the interim use option, or interim use permit option to them, as suggested by Jerry when we met last week. Not confident that it will be a solution, but DHS, if they offer some flexibility, means that is an option. We've also started a petition for rezoning as another option to consider, and we're looking to at least. We've also gathered a list of testimonials from community members advocating for this expansion, as well as feedback gathered from our neighbors. As we expected, the main concern in our neighborhood is the traffic coming through the neighborhood. That being said, seventy-two point seven percent of the twelve neighbors who did complete the survey support us accepting the grant funds and increasing our enrollment. But it was also worth noting that after our yurt was built in two thousand twenty-one, Eagleview Elementary School, which is directly behind our property, they serve over six hundred students, and they also incorporated a yurt as a outdoor classroom for their major center, which is directly behind our property. We have also become leaders in the Minnesota Core School Movement, and we'll soon begin offering tours and professional guidance to experienced Core School leaders across the state, as well as teachers and administrators working here as incorporated, and learning to public schools. And our hope is that we can see the benefits of this as well and kind of help us through this process.
Any questions here?
What kind of action were, would you, would we need to do? I mean, they haven't really.
Well, the zoning of that property that they occupy today is wooded residential. Under the wooded residential zoning, they're allowed a daycare facility to be up to serving twelve or fewer, fewer persons. It's something that's allowed without a permit of any kind. Once you get above that number, which I think they've, they're approaching that number and planning on increasing, then we get into the current zoning, I think probably would necessarily be, in order to accommodate that increase, would need to be a home occupation that would be approved via interim use permit. Which is something that's allowed in, home occupations are allowed in, in most residential districts. Typically, a home occupation is, is done through the interim use process, which is very similar to conditional use. The only difference really is the fact that an interim use has a starting and ending date to it. Typically, if an interim use permit is issued, and they adhere to the terms and conditions that were prescribed, it usually gets reissued after that, that limit, or the, it's usually five years that goes with it. I think that's the appropriate vehicle to use in order to accomplish what they're trying to accomplish. I don't think that rezoning in that issue, in that area to a commercial use is appropriate because there's nothing commercial around it. Everything is either residential or agricultural. So I, I do believe that the interim use is probably the, the appropriate vehicle to use. I have met with, with Rachel, and we've talked about that. Just because of the uniqueness of it, I thought it would be beneficial if she introduced herself in the, the process before a formal hearing. Even though you're, she's talking to you today about her project, there would still need to be a formal process that would have to happen.
So this is more informational gathering for us?
This is more informational gathering to, to get you an idea of what's, what's coming. It might perk your, your interest in, in, perk some questions at, at the time of the hearing.
Part of the reason why we're allowed to grow is because the county is implementing a pod model of child care. So I don't know if it's because of the pandemic or what, but they're creating the model where the homeowners can become a director, and there can be multiple pods and classrooms to accommodate homeowners who have a need in our area. So that's why this is.
So with this, what's your, I'd say like, year-to-five-year plan for this? It sounds like you do want to build a yurt. Is there other things to consider that you would want to build to accommodate the seventy expected? Or do you expect more over, say, a five-year time period?
So our timeline for building this year, if it works out, would be by July or potentially September, like for the school year. As far as the five-year plan, I think that we're pretty set and sticking to the two classrooms. And if we ever wanted to go beyond that, we would consider finding another property that would be larger.
So that would be at the most seventy people, or seventy students, or?
So as of right now, the county allows up to fourteen per day and then twelve per day in the city. With this change, we could have up to twenty-four to twenty-eight children per day. In two thousand twenty-one, we served thirty-five families, just because we have some camp programs that are inside for a month at a time, or children come two days a week or three days a week, so it depends on who we're working with. Twenty-four to twenty-eight.
And you would stay with ages two through six?
We have talked about extending it slightly, so right now, it's kind of silly numbers of childcare, but right now we that way children would never reach the age of seven within a school year because unless they've reached age seven, then there are more requirements in terms of
That, one, I got another question. To operate with two separate addresses, is that? So you, you'd have to split the lot, wouldn't you?
Yeah, they'd have to split the lot, and they don't have enough property to split the lot under the, under the zoning requirements. It's, it's a little bit complicated, and I think the easiest way to, to address it is through a, an interim use permit at one, one piece of property only. They, they are allowed up to have they're allowed accessory structure.
Seven hundred and fifty square feet, isn't it? Witted residential. Gas cabin of seven fifty?
They're, because they're, because they're over two acres, they're allowed a, accessory structures up to two percent of the total property area. So they're not approaching that at all, frankly. They, they probably could do the, this yurt and another yurt. They wouldn't approach what the, the maximum that's allowed as far as an accessory structure is concerned.
And there isn't anything that says there can only be so many accessory structures in the zoning, is that correct?
Pardon?
There isn't anything that limits the number of accessory structures?
Not the number, but the total square footage, the accumulative square footage is what's, what's limiting.
So that's that two percent you were talking about?
That's the two percent total.
This was my understanding that anything west of us was commercial or public, and this is a wildlife management area, so I didn't know if that affected the ability to be.
It's public, it isn't commercial.
Okay, so it wouldn't affect that?
No.
Do you have a designated parent drop-off and pickup times?
We do.
Do, okay. Could you tell us what that is?
Eight thirty to nine AM and
Okay. Do you expect the traffic issue to be a challenge?
I think that would be one of the main challenges within our neighborhood.
Okay.
But I, I do think that it's something that can still work.
And you have sufficient entrance and exit from your property?
That wraps around our, and then the, the yurts are back in the woods behind.
Okay.
And for the summer curriculum? And for the summer curriculum, is there anything different than avatar's drop-off times or changes in traffic pattern that would be, you know?
The only thing that would occur outside of school hours is we usually have family gatherings for the years, you know?
Congratulations on the grant, by the way. That's great.
Thank you.
I hope we all are understanding of the need for childcare slots. It's a critical, critical issue.
So that small piece on the other side of the road, is that something that you guys are using now or looking to maybe do something?
Other than that, there's nothing built there. We thought about ten acres of green earth on there. I know that's a whole other thing, but it's just kind of an awkward piece of land that we built out specifically.
So the kids aren't going back and forth across that road?
Occasionally, yes.
Okay.
Yes, and that's another thing.
Yeah.
So how many acres do you have total? Does it say in here?
Five and a half.
Five and a half acres? Okay. So that a little piece might be three quarter of an acre or something?
And it was three parcels, we just got it consolidated to the west.
Do you have any interchange with the school behind you?
We do have a good relationship with them, yes. Actually, a lot of the elementary school students access our property to interact with animals and do respiratory skiing and snow chewing, and their nature center being right there. One of our neighbors in our neighborhood is also the nature center director, and so it's been a great relationship, hopeful from both sides.
When you mention animals, are there any animals outside of, naturally in the area?
Yes, and I actually discussed this with Jerry last week. We unintentionally broke the rules, and we had all happenstance, and we didn't know, I thought that we submitted an interim use permit for that and that it was approved, but that was abrupt, and whatever we need to do to make that right, we are...
Does the school allow you to use their facilities at all, the playground or any of the other facilities?
We've, we've gone over there a few times to get verbal permission, but not things that I know of specifically, but I just, all right, but I haven't been in contact with the decision on that specifically.
So the only animals you have are those?
The porches and...
That's, the other issue is, they do have animals. The animals, my ordinance are not allowed in that zoning district. Any animal husbandry is not allowed in any residential district. The question is, does, does that prompt you to have a discussion about whether we should be revisiting animal husbandry?
Please.
And, and there's certainly been a lot of discussion going back and forth for, for a number of years. I, I think it's something for the, the commission to think about if they want to visit it again. You know, they can have those discussions, but right now, they, there's not a real, there isn't a legal way to do it.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
We will, they, the applicants are, will be submitting an interim use application. There will be a scheduled public hearing at the next planning commission meeting to consider it.
All right, well, this now opens us up for open forum number two. So anyone else that would like to come forward for open forum number two? And please state your name.
Mr. John, a couple of ways, yeah, they really do work with the kids, spend a lot of time, but however, one of the points is the traffic on the road. When I was on the city council, I requested that the speed limit sign be up to an hour, but to be honest, it's maybe twenty, thirty percent of the car that come down there, or we did the speed limit. I had a couple of thoughts. One was if a road could be extended from the exit road from the school just down the hill to their property, that's one option. Another one is to require the traffic coming into their place, come in from the P block side, which then goes by, goes right to their place, does not pass any other residences. I don't know if you can enforce or how you would do it, but if that would be a possibility, that would be open to their expanding. The only other thing is, I think we need to make a limit. If this is going to be twenty-eight, and if they go beyond that, I'll have to start a new facility somewhere, because there will be neighborhoods not set up with a larger school, or...
Thank you.
My name's John Vee, and to get that back up there again, maybe you would help. My wife and I are at six eight eight four in a little property right borders on the Ashdown Forest School on East Side, and includes twelve acres just east of the school. I don't, I don't know whether my credential is of any value here, but let me just say that I think I'm influential in favor. And I, I'd say great point, in fact, that I think that the Nickelwood neighborhood might be one of the finest neighborhoods in Greenport, just in terms of the culture, the people take care of each other, our ski trails, our community basketball courts, our community ice rinks, our community salas, our, our places where we go when all the power goes out. I mean, it is a really terrific neighborhood. And I, I feel like I inherited some of that from the Nickel family and a little bit from the Springer family, and, and it's really been a joy to be a part of that neighborhood. My other thing I want you to be aware of is that I retired from independent school business, and I was independent school for forty years in three different college prep schools. That's my background, pre-K to twelve education is my background. I want to tell you that the Ashdown Forest School is impressive beyond, I would encourage you to go visit. It is, they are doing amazing work for their kids. Any child, benefit from what they're doing. It is, it is the state of the art, actually, in terms of preschool programs, because four schools are five schools, where kids get a chance to do a lot, a lot of sorts along the way, but to do it in minutes. And kids, kids came to it like they, it's just a, a, for interim, and Jake and Rachel are phenomenal in not only in organizing the school, but just in terms of their talent as teachers. I could not be more impressed. And all I can say, whether there's problems with regard to any part of zoning or traffic or whatever else, I would encourage you to do anything and everything you can to support that endeavor, because I truly believe that the Ashdown Forest School is one of recent points' premier assets, not knowing about that yet, but I think it is extraordinary. Worth talking about way beyond Crow Wing County. So, and that's just kind of my thinking. Anything we can do to support that, I, I have a feeling, I'll get some supporters all the time at my place, because if you will make a call, and so they're backing for it, I'd be helpful as I can, because I just believe that...
Thank you, John. For open forum number two before we close. All right, well, those open forum number two, and proceed on to other items on the agenda. Jerry, I believe you have a discussion on pods.
I, no, there must be a pod salesman out there today. We've, in the last month, we've received three requests for pods on residential properties. We've informed those people that pods are not allowed on a permanent basis, they are only allowed on a temporary basis. The question, or one of the comments that I got was, well, Airport Storage has two of them, why can't I have one? And we probably didn't realize that Airport Storage actually had any until all the trees went down. And there are two there. The question again is, do these requests or these comments prompt the commission to have another discussion about whether pods should be allowed or not? I'm not expecting reaction this evening, but I just wanted to broach the subject and to get you to think about it a little bit. I think there's, you know, if you, if you determine that they could be allowed, under what conditions, that type of thing? You could say the ordinance is good the way it is and we shouldn't allow, or should they be allowed in, in a commercial setting only? I think those are potential options that you may want to think about, and I'm sure there's others out there that, that I haven't thought about, but I just, again, want to prompt the thought process. And not asking for a reaction today, but I just want to introduce the subject again.
The three requests that we had, that you've received recently for pods, were they something different than what we allow? Is there like a common theme that they want something different?
Well, no, it's just, it's, it's, again, it's an accessory structure that has some real benefit, because unlike a wood structure or something, they're pretty tight, they're rodent and watertight. Some really look good and some really look crappy. But again, everybody has a different idea what they'd like. Is it something that the, the city thinks is a good idea? I guess I don't know.
So if I read this correct, basically, they could have one for any purpose for sixty days in one calendar year, unless it's for construction, and then the sixty days could extend to the length of time for construction?
Right. They're only allowed on a temporary basis, they are not allowed as a permanent basis, and these folks are looking at them as a permanent storage structure.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Gary, is, do you remember, is there a reason why our current ordinance doesn't speak to pods on commercial property?
I just, I think that at the time that that ordinance was, was initiated, I don't think there was any thought brought to...
Right, that's what I remember also.
The, the commercial part of it? I do believe it was more of a neighborhood concern that they shouldn't be allowed at all.
It, it was more of a residential issue than...
Yes.
Than a commercial issue, yeah.
Actually, the one that prompted it was a temporary one that was right down the street over here on North Pinewood, I believe. Again, I'm not asking for a reaction, I'm just asking for some thought.
Thank you, Jerry.
So we'll have this as a discussion on another agenda?
I, I will ask you at the, after the next meeting if you've had any thoughts and...
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not putting it as a formal agenda item, I would like some, some input from you folks before we even spin our wheels.
Could, could we spend just a couple minutes just talking about the potential of pods on commercial property? That's where, that's where my thinking is. My, my thinking, quite frankly, is I think our ordinance is okay for residential purposes, but it may be missing the issue of a pod on a commercial site?
Like a permanent type situation on a commercial site, is that what you're thinking?
Probably.
Then do you have a, you have to have a limit on them, correct? There'd be a row of them if you said, okay, commercial's fine, they'll stack them up.
I agree, yeah. They would begin to take place of a warehouse.
I don't care what you say, they all look ugly, even the nice ones, you know? I mean, they're kind of commercial looking.
I'm just wondering if we have a different attitude about a pod being on a commercial property versus residential.
Does anyone have a feeling on that?
I guess I would, in general, to me, Raising Point's residential community and I don't think there is the kind of place for pods on residential property. With respect to the industrial property, I think it's got to be limited, because as you said, they can put them row, put them, put them in a row and just make a whole yard full of pods, and I think that's contrary to what we're trying to strive for in our residential community.
These pods are kind of, how would you say, you can move them all the time, so they're not a permanent structure. So if you start getting them, they're, okay.
My experience with non-permanent structures is that they always turn into permanent structures.
That's what I mean. So this pod will be permanent, yeah.
Were these requests for residential or, or commercial use?
Actually, they were for residential.
In my general sense, I would be opposed to it.
Has there been much for a commercial request? Any need for changing that?
There hasn't been a lot of requests, although, again, we have two of them on Airport Storage. That's what's prompted the, the discussion.
Tracy, you would, are you saying you're opposed to our current ordinance or just opposed to the...
I, I would support the current ordinance.
The current, okay, and staying with the current.
But we can tell you next time.
I don't, you know, I, I don't have strong feelings one way or the other, quite frankly. I just, I'm relating some requests that I've had. And I think it's, it's appropriate if we say that the commission had a discussion and determined that the, the present ordinance is adequate. I think that's, that's all we really need to, to say. Or we've had a discussion, we think that they should be allowed XYZ, or not allowed XYZ. Again, I'm not asking for that this evening, I'm asking for some thought.
Have you had a discussion with Airport Storage at all, Jerry?
Yes, I have.
Okay. I assume it didn't go well.
Oh, it didn't go badly.
Okay.
They probably said it's grandfathered in.
We, we did check that to see if it was before the ordinance or after the ordinance.
Okay.
He was kind enough to show us when he bought them and got them, so it was after the ordinance. was after the ordinance was in effect. Again, it's kind of like I didn't know, but...
So next meeting, we will bring this up again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. All right, any other business?
Um, a comment was made, I think, about the speeds on, on Nickel Road. What is the speed limit?
Thirty.
Thirty? And is there a sense that people are exceeding that? I go back to my age-old concern about enforcement. Uh, perhaps we ought to, I don't know if we can direct the police, but they ought to, they ought to set up a, a speed trap, set, set up, uh, uh, you know, surveillance. Uh, I think they do a fairly adequate job. I don't know if it's, uh, Breezy Point Police or the Highway Patrol, but when, when that thirty mile an hour speed limit goes on, on the flashing lights up by the school, they've been there on, you know, on frequent occasion to at least make their presence known, and I don't see anybody, not too many people, when I'm driving through there, exceeding thirty miles an hour up there. So if we've got a problem with speeding in one part of town, we ought to enforce it. That's just the good of the order.
I think, I think that's something, they, they ordered some new equipment that is going to be able to monitor some of that stuff.
It's just going to count it though. Isn't, isn't it just going to count?
Yes, it'll, it will count, it will count, it will monitor the speeds and it will give you an idea of what's going on.
Oh, it will monitor the speed, okay, okay. I thought it was just counting...
No.
...numbers of bumps.
Typically, you do that type of study before you set an arbitrary speed limit that, number one, is probably unenforceable in a lot of cases. Uh, you should have some reasons for doing it. Typically, the highway department tells you right now that the majority of the people that drive a road will drive it at a safe speed that the road is designed for. Um, and traffic counts tell you what that safe speed should be. And I can, I can understand the, the Nickel Road thing, because the properties are, are big, they're far apart, there isn't a lot, it isn't like a residential setting like Shoreview Drive. It's, it's a lot different. Uh, in, properties and, and homes and, and garages and whatever are close to the road, they have a traffic calming effect just by being there. People slow down because they don't feel as safe driving as fast as they do in a, an area that's really wide open. Um, so I think there should be some thought to how a speed limit is derived on a, on a road, no matter where it is.
I suppose speed bumps in Minnesota wouldn't work, would they?
No. Speed bumps are an excuse, and speed bumps work somewhat in, for nine months of the year in areas that have curb and gutter. Where, where areas where you don't have curb and gutter, what ends up happening is people drive over the, the lunes of the, the adjacent properties to avoid the speed bumps.
Okay. Well, we just came back from Hawaii, so they have a lot of speed bumps there, and they, of course, they have these portable ones.
Yeah.
These plastic ones.
They don't plow snow.
And they said they couldn't enforce the speed limit until they start putting in these speed bumps, and people had to slow down. Of course, we have snow and there, there's a lot of speed bumps over there. I mean, it's...
The other, the other part of that is that a speed bump is kind of like a traffic or like a, like a stop sign. You put a stop sign at every corner, what you get is quick deceleration, quick acceleration, and that's actually more, it's more hazardous than a steady, slow speed.
Yeah, if you can keep them at that...
If you can keep them at that steady speed. And it, you know, bottom line is, there's six policemen in, in Breezy Point. Can they be in every street at every time? Heck, no.
Well, you're talking twenty miles an hour, Tom, how about twenty-five? Maybe twenty's pretty slow.
What I'm going to say is, basically, we need to collect the data, and the issue that came up on Shoreview Drive, we did have a speed monitor there, uh, last year, excuse me, or year before last, whatever, was it, when was it?
I believe it was last year, and then it was, it, it wasn't functioning properly.
Right, yeah. And it basically showed that people were not speeding, okay? And it's the, it's a perceived speed. When you see somebody going by at twenty-five...
Yeah.
You know, they think he's going, going by at fifty when he's, you know, actually, you know, go by at thirty, and the guy, you know, you, you say he's going by there at ninety miles an hour. But, uh, and as Jerry said, people have a tendency to drive what they think is a safe speed, and generally, it's under the speed limit on a city street. This, you know, uniformly thirty miles an hour, but people rarely drive thirty miles an hour on a city street.
Yeah.
But again, it's, it's data collection. If this really...
Did you just take your hand out back there?
Looks like it could be a problem, then we could, you know...
That's true.
Maybe budget and get another, uh, speed monitor signed to, you know, get that data, or when we have data on Shoreview, we could move it over to Nickel Road to see if it's an issue.
Are those machines that expensive?
They're expensive, yeah.
Are they?
Yeah. Cause it, it gathers a lot of information, you know? It doesn't take any pictures or anything like that, but it gives you the time of day, the speed, um, all that kind of stuff. So, I mean, you can get a lot of data out of it.
Actually, right now, we've closed open forum, so we're not allowed to bring you up. Okay. Any other discussion here? All right, then we will formally adjourn. Thank you.
Good job, Mercy.